So friends, welcome. It's it's good to have you here and thanks for joining us today. As as you know, my name is Stephen Feder and I manage the United Learning Program for the General Counsel Office. And it is my pleasure and my honor to be coordinating this this Lenten study for the last session in 2023. My goodness, it's amazing how quickly it's gone and and we've had a lovely time. I sure have enjoyed doing this with you. So I'm I'm so pleased that you have been signing on and participating and enjoying it so much. I've had some lovely notes from you around the edges and it really is. It's it's been great for me to move through Lent and I think it sounds like for you too. So thanks. Thanks for being a part of it. Thanks for participating. Thanks for agreeing to reading. Thanks for sharing your music and and for being a part of this. As we gather, we just need to take a moment to focus our thoughts. I will bring up my candle, which is slowly turning into mush. I think you can still see it if I this is what happens. I do an evening worship service with folks in my congregation three nights a week and the candle gets shorter and shorter and shorter. I think it's time to go out to Michael's and get some more. Anyway, take a moment as we gather just to pause and to remember why we're here. To think about think about Lent and what this has meant for you. Think about the the season that we've moved through. Think about courage that we've been talking about. Courage that we need. Think about where courage is found for you. As we gather, we'll light our candles. And if you have one, I invite you to light yours as I light mine. Take a moment to give thanks for the light that brings us courage. For the guidance that helps us move through the darkness. The hope that we find even in the middle of Holy Week. Even on the worst days. And for the assurance always that we are not alone. Thanks be to God. And so Jim, over to you to move us into the territorial acknowledgement and then we'll open with prayer.
Just so you know, this is a land recognition text that Prairie du Pine Regional Council has is now using. And I will begin. Prairie du Pine Regional Council is located on lands covered by treaties one, two, three, four, five, and nine. These are the traditional and ancestral lands of many indigenous peoples, including Anishinaabe, Ojibwe Sotaw, Nahandawak, oh, I'm going to mess up these pronunciations, Rocky Cree, Inewak Swampy Cree, Nehewiwak Plains Cree, Anishinuwak Ojibwe Cree, Dakota, Dene, and the homeland of the Red River Métis. Treaties created relationships, excuse me. Treaties created relationships between treaty partners and the agreements that they made were intended to be mutually beneficial. The treaties are living documents that include all of us. And so we are all treaty people. We acknowledge that five Dakota communities in Manitoba are not signatory to any treaty with Canada. As indigenous and non-indigenous people who call this land home, we know that the mistakes which are part of our history of colonization have caused deep and lasting harm. We affirm that the sovereignty and distinct nationhood of indigenous peoples needs to be upheld and that the sustaining connection to traditional and ancestral lands must support in practical ways the sovereignty and nationhood. We commit ourselves to the truth telling that needs to continue to happen as we seek reconciliation and healing and as we work toward a better future.
Thank you, Jim. And so I hope as you listen to Jim, you're also thinking about the treaty that binds you. The ways in which we are all connected and part of a big web of people who are nourished by this land and have been nourished. And so let's gather in prayer. Speak love into our hearts. So God, speak your love song into the times of grief and hopelessness. Speak your love song into our wanderings and our wanderings. Speak your love song into the times when we don't know what to say. Speak your love song and teach us to sing of love. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. And so we're going to read from 2 Corinthians today. Let me find that and I'll invite Sherry and Liz, if you could open your mics, please, and lead us through this.
From now on, therefore, we regard no one from a human point of view. Even though we once knew Christ from a human point of view, we know him no longer in that way.
So if anyone is in Christ, there is a new creation. Everything old has passed away. See, everything has renewed.
Second, I can't see the top line just a minute.
All of this.
All this is from God who reconciled us to himself through Christ and has given us the ministry of reconciliation. That is, in Christ, God was reconciling the world to himself, not counting their trespasses against them and entrusting the message of reconciliation to us.
So we are ambassadors for Christ since God is making that appeal through us and treat you on behalf of Christ. Be reconciled to God.
For our sake, he made him to be to be sin who knew no sin, so that in him we might become the righteousness of God.
Thank you. Thanks for reading. So I'll just leave that up on the screen so you can read it again if you want to. We'll start with a sort of question I always start with, which is, what did you notice? What what was the sort of phrase or line that jumped out at you in that today? Again, feel free to use the chat so that we all have a chance to participate. Although I should say if the chat is really hard because it's hard to type, feel free to open your mic too. Everything old has passed away, says Beryl. Everything, everything has become new, transformation to new life, says Patricia. Nancy says, how ancient is the need of and for reconciliation? We're ambassadors for Christ. What a powerful image. Thanks, Kathy. Rosemary says, I'm always pleased to hear that everything old has passed away and everything is new. It describes the transforming and regenerating power of the Creator. She just says, we regard no one from a human point of view. Interesting, right?
I wanted to expand on the ambassadors for Christ. I want her to definition of an ambassador is a good person who lies for their country. And I would like to change that, you know, as ambassadors for Christ, we would be people who tell God's truth.
Let me find the questions. I'm just sorry. I'm not ignoring you. I'm looking over at another screen. So in this passage, God, Paul is making a connection. Making a connection between that new creation and reconciliation. So how does that comparison between new creation and reconciliation help you to understand reconciliation differently? Bob, I've always stumbled over that line. I don't know what it means. Made him to be sin. I have no idea what Paul was trying to say there. Merrill says reconciliation, like resurrection, is not a one-time event. Interesting. Jerry says, starting over and starting new again in the relationship. Reconciliation assumes a past though, doesn't it? So I guess resurrection does as well. It's not just creating out of whole cloth. It's kind of putting it right. Patricia says, being given the understanding of others than ourselves and accepting the differences is good. Yeah, I think that's part of it, and I think it's even more than that because then we have this responsibility to be reconcilers, right? That's part of what it means to be followers of Christ, part of Christ's community. Bill, I don't know whether you are, you're still writing to me directly. Can I share your comment publicly? Because I think that's important. Susan says, for our sake, God made him to be human.
Or it's the, yeah, Stephen, that's fine.
Thank you. So reconciliation says, Bill, it's not a government mandate or program. It's a ministry to which we've all been entrusted. The whole truth and reconciliation commission was an idea from Archbishop Tutu, right? We Canadians took it from the South African government, but Tutu invented it. It was a church word before it was a government word. So how does that change your understanding of what it means to be Christian?
It's not as easy as it looks.
I love it. It sure isn't, is it?
My husband always said it's simple, but it's not easy.
I think there's whole branches of Christianity who think that our only job is to make everybody else Christian. But if our job is to be reconcilers, maybe our job is to help people of difference get along. Maybe rather than making them all like us. Being Christian is not being perfect requires work. I wonder if Paul prayed Jesus pair using prayer, using his phrase trespasses. Truth telling comes with both risks and humility, says Beryl. We are peacemakers, says Sherry. Give and take, says Susan. Very different take on what it means to be Christian in the world, isn't it? What our role is. Not necessarily make people like us. You know, the Corinthian community was the most divided of all the first century churches. All of the, both of the Corinthian letters, Paul is is trying to make them talk to each other and stop beating each other up. Reconciliation is a huge theme in the Corinthian correspondence. There is no one way, says Judy. Jerry says, if we're a new creation in Christ, do we have to leave behind our past experience? Guess it depends what we're made from. You know, there's huge debate among the rabbis about whether God created in Genesis out of nothingness or out of chaos. But I think resurrection is about God creating out of what went before. So I don't think it's that we leave behind the past, but that it is somehow transformed. That's the stuff from which resurrection is made. Gosh, the chat's moving too fast. I can't read it all. Important comments and thank you. I'm not going to read them all. God reads them all, so I don't have to. But I'm going to move along and move us into the passage that that Alexa Gilmore has read for us. As always, I've invited her, first of all, just to start it off, start us off by simply reading it. We'll respond to that before we see any of the conversation that I had with her. So sit back and relax. This one is a tearjerker for me, probably will be for you too.
Love song. Coming into the hospital ICU, I take a breath and say a prayer. The nurse is escorting a middle-aged woman to the quiet room off to the side. And as a hospital chaplain on call, it's a familiar room to me. We always take people there when the doctor and the family need privacy. I'm sorry. We're doing everything we can, but your husband isn't responding. There isn't any more we can do. The doctor leaves. And the wife collapses to her knees on the cold, sterile floor. And I kneel beside her and I wait. She is in agony. He can't die. He can't die, she sobs. I haven't been a good enough wife. Like this. He, he, he doesn't know I love him. And I can hear her heart breaking. I don't see any hope. And I pray. Please, God, tell me what to say. And her mournful wails subside into gentle sobs and I chant, speaking into the grief-filled room. Your love for him is so obvious to me. But I see that you're worried. You feel you haven't demonstrated love. There is still time. Might there be a way to show him right now? She lifts her face to mine to meet my eyes for the very first time. And she stands up, calmly wipes her tears and walks out of the room. And I follow her to the bedside. Her husband is lying on his stomach, intubated and depending upon machines to breathe. She tentatively reaches out, pressing her fingers into his mid-back. She begins to sing. She spends the next six days tenderly caressing his body and singing until there is no doubt that this man deeply loved. On the seventh day, he died in her arms.
So that's the reading for Holy Saturday. It's the last one in the book. What did you notice? What spoke to you in that? There he says, definitely a tearjerker. In so many ways to show love. These gods, as Beryl, tell me what to say. Kathy says it too. I haven't been a good enough wife, says Brenda Lee. So much grace at the time of death, says Rosemary. Great compassion. There's still time not knowing what to say. Hearing says Karen is said to be the last scent to leave our body when we're dying. So singing rather than just speaking or being silent is so powerful. He says, the chaplain noted the love for her husband, yet she felt she wasn't a good enough wife. If you're the passing of another always difficult time, our family is going through this with my sister who's palliative, says Ruth. Seven is a number in the Bible, but points out Bob, God, John's gospel is filled with the seven signs, the seven Jesus encounters. So connect this story to the scripture that we were talking about, to this whole notion of reconciliation. How was this moment? The time of reconciliation. Amazing and loving presence as her husband transitioned to the next graceful, says Telly. Strength, encourage, compassion, guidance of the chaplain to assist the already grieving wife. Bringing up personal things for Patricia. Vulnerability, tenderness come together as the spirit moves and heals. Running go of her self-doubt, acting in love, says Joanna.
I would like to extend the image of the grief-filled room to a grief-filled world. And that really is the ministry, the reconciling work of God.
Thank you. Reconciling to what is, says Judy. Absolutely. You can't ignore the finality of death here. It's real. Reconciling to what was. Coming to terms with the good and the bad of what had been, right? That's part of grief work. So how does the chaplain here offer this one as something to hope in, even without minimizing the inevitability of the death that's going to happen? Because death is final. And yet we hope. But holding those two together is really complicated, I think. Even when we think we don't have enough time, says Susan, God helps us find the time and courage to do what we need to do in ways we may not have imagined. Chaplain says, there's still time. I love that she doesn't tell a woman what to do. She just says, you can do it. I believe in you. Now, chaplain said, maybe there's something you can do even now. Ministry of presence, quiet and supportive, says Rosemary. While we have breath, it's never too late. If you affirm that her love is obvious. Yeah, that's important, because she doesn't believe it is. Sometimes the fewest words offered are the most poignant, says Beryl. Let me share with you some of my conversation with Alexa as we started to talk about this together. Thanks for that comment, Vicky. Sometimes silence is powerful, isn't it? More powerful than words. Let me, let me share with you how I goodness me, I can't even spell. Ralphecting with Alexa. Let me change that before I post publish that. Anyway, here we go. Let's reflect with her. Alexa, I just, I just love this piece and it brings tears to my eyes every time I read it, and especially when, when, when I heard you reading it. I was I was thinking about this in the context of Good Friday, Holy Saturday. I mean, in the book, it's intended to be read on Holy Saturday and it's in this section about when only love remains. So on Good Friday, we're talking about Jesus' death, but we're talking about Jesus' death kind of as a paradigm, an example, a way of our talking about our own death or death generally. I mean, say a little bit about that. Love and and what's coming through for you in terms of Good Friday in this.
I think you're, you, you are lifting up some really key themes that and part of why that story, whenever I tell it also resonates for me is that it's one of the major themes in our lives, right? Death, resurrection, loss. And in that moment of of death, be it our loved one's death, be it a job, be it a church that is dying, be it right. We tend to think we are abandoned and that all hope is gone, right? And I, and I felt that in that moment of like, oh no, this woman, she's lost her moment, right? This is, he's going to die. The doctor said there's no hope. And it's the night, you know, it's Jesus crying out, why have you forsaken me? Only to discover that in those moments, there's a couple of things happening. There is the, the suffering that pulls us away from the divine source of our lives and makes us feel so abandoned and alone. And there is the, the God that's resurrecting, right? And we see that, for example, in And there is the, the God that's resurrecting, right? And we see that, for example, in, in the metaphor of the garden we have. We, we are perfectly comfortable with putting our beds, you know, flower beds to peace in the fall, trusting that they will spring again in, you know, in a few months later. But we have a really hard time in other places, including our own lives and death, believing that death is not the end, right? That there is renewal and rebirth. And as a hospital chaplain, I saw it so often that A, the struggle, but also those who were at peace with it. And then also those experiences, the mystical experiences of somebody on the other side that somehow was communicating with someone on this side. And so I wish as a community and in that moment with that woman and as church, that there was a way to be reminded of breathing into God's promise, even when we can't see it, even when we believe, why have we been forsaken? As, as, as a person or as church, right? This idea that, that our churches are dying. Don't think that that's true. I, I think, you know, I think the old body of the church is dying, but the body of Christ is resurrecting in new ways and, and will we have the eyes to see it on the road to Emmaus? But in order to get there, we do have to let go. Right? Let go and breathe and pray and say, show me, you know, show me God. Where is new life? Again, whether that's in a, a, a job loss, a relationship loss, right? And that doesn't mean erase the suffering, erase the grief, because we because whenever we love, we choose, we have to grieve the, the loss of it, right? There's, that's part of it. There's that Good Friday, Holy Saturday time. But, but show me the hope, show me the light. Where's the grace to get me from here to there? Is a, is a prayer that I think I'm frequently trying to, to to remind myself and those I love, you know, to, to sit in and trust. And then these miracle moments happen, like the woman singing to her husband, like the entire ICU could tell that love was radiating from, you know, that bed. So.
And I'm going to pause it there. Conversation goes on and we'll look at some more in just a minute, but what, what spoke to you in that much? Church is not dying, says Susan. The old ways are dying. Show me God where there's new life. God is constant. Trust. Suffering which pulls us away from awareness of God and hope, says Joanna. Loss and death don't necessarily erase things, says Rosemary. When we think hope is gone, says Judy, we sing, we sing songs. We sung songs we know to honor the past and to send us into the future. We readily accept, says Susan, that there'd be rebirth in gardens and struggle to see the possibility in our own lives. I love the way she talked about putting her garden to peace in the, in the fall. I've never thought of it that way. Have to look for new ways to build the church. Maybe an amalgamation, says Ruth. Could be something totally different than that too, couldn't it? The one who's hurting shows the word in the world that love is there. Nancy says those are powerful four letter words, life, love, hope. It's hard to hear the voice of God showing us places of grace when we are suffering, says Judy. Really struck me listening to her talk about Holy Saturday time. And this is the reading for Holy Saturday in the book. As I was kind of pondering that this morning, I was thinking, you know, we don't make a whole lot out of Holy Saturday in our tradition. And maybe that's a maybe we're missing something, right? I've been working on Good Friday liturgy and building the Good Friday service, and then I'll get onto the Easter service. And for me, Holy Saturday is the day to run around and get ready for Easter, but it's not, is it? How is this Holy Saturday time? We miss something so important. Sitting with, it's holding, says Manson. Vigil time, accompanying, standing with, waiting and watching. Easter hasn't happened yet, but something's going on underground that we can't see yet. They didn't know about resurrection. They didn't. But that doesn't mean nothing was happening. Holy Saturday is like staying in bed all day with the covers pulled up over my head, says Jerry. Waiting for God to show themselves. Time of mourning. We don't often give ourselves enough time to grieve, you know, we assume it's going to be over in a day or a week. Ruth says God is working in our life, always working in our life, but we don't see it. Be wonderful time to light a bonfire and gather to wait for the Easter morning light, says Beryl. Or maybe just sing in the dark, right? Congregation, I served as a very intercultural one and I did a Caribbean funeral a couple of years ago that I will never forget. We did, we went through a whole funeral. We all went down to the graveside. And then somebody started singing and we stood there at the graveside and somebody in the old Methodist tradition just sort of lined out the words, gave us the next word and they sang gospel choruses one after the other, after the other almost for an hour as we stood at the graveside. This story reminds me of that. It was the most powerful statement of faith I've ever seen. Here on a cold November day, we will sing about new life. Just since shivers up my back to think about it. The Anglicans do have a Easter vigil. Midnight, they light the, the bonfire. Absolutely, Nancy. When COVID hit, says Karen, we were in Holy Saturday forever. We didn't know what was going to happen. Would we come through it? I think even Easter Sunday morning, that first one, nobody really knew what to, what to make of it. It took them weeks to really get their heads into it, didn't it? A week later, Thomas isn't believing and seven weeks later, they're still sitting in darkness in the, in the, in the room with the doors closed and not, not sure what, what it all means. I think resurrection takes a long time to kind of have an impact on us. Beryl says, I once did a funeral and behind the other stones in the cemetery came the words from Swing Low Sweet Chariot and everyone joined in. It was magical, she says. We had a vigil, says Judith. We lit one candle in a huge dark sanctuary. Amazing light. Lighting a candle in the midst of the darkness, singing a song in the midst of death, affirming life, even at the ending of it. Those are the miraculous moments, aren't they? Let's continue with the, with the video. Let me find the right, where's the share button? There we go. So I, I mean, that's what's so luminous about this piece and this story. And you as, as the sort of mediator of grace there, offered her something, offered her courage, which is what the book is about, right? The study on good courage. Where do you as caregiver find the courage to go into ICU like that? I mean, parcel away death into funeral homes because we don't want it in our living rooms. It takes a fair amount of courage to go and face the stuff that none of us want to talk about.
Yeah, it, it, it does, right? That, that, and it's the stuff of miracles. So we do it once and we, and we, and we see what's possible and that gives us more courage to do it again, right? And I think sometimes we also think that we, we have to have some sort of special skill, right? As opposed to the power of, of witnessing, the power of being willing to sit with somebody in the discomfort and the silence and say, I don't have the answers either, but I won't abandon you, right?
You did, you, you said nothing. You gave almost no advice. You just let her find her way through it and accompany her in that. That was just so moving.
I think it's a great lesson for my, you know, my, myself and maybe others who, who want to scramble to attention and do busy work, right? That sometimes the best thing we can do is hold the silence and stillness until another voice speaks, right? That a voice of the divine speaks through us and to trust that that, that that is, that God is there. We don't have to do it all. That, and that our presence alone can be a tremendous gift to someone who, who feels completely lost in the moment.
So you, maybe you've already answered this. In that last statement, I think you probably have, but, but say a little more. The whole, the whole theme of hope runs through this piece from beginning to the end. You start at the beginning by saying, I don't see any hope. And yet I think the piece is profoundly hopeful. So what did you learn from this that helps you see hope differently now?
Oh, that's a good question. I, I think I'm beginning to trust that hope is in the eternal, that, that that God is present and at work and I can be, in fact, I'm invited to be by, by virtue of being born at this moment in time that, that I'm part of God's hopeful plan. And I don't have to be anything other than myself, but I have to show up to these moments with courage. And that, then I have to let go and trust that that bubble of grace that happened in that hospital room was more than enough for, for, for me, for that man who was dying, for the wife, for the doctors, for those who were reading this story. And that's the eternal peace, right? That these little drops of grace or moments of light. We, we need to stop judging them as good enough, too much, not enough, and trust that, that God's the gardener in this and that it's exactly enough. Even if we can't see it, it's exactly enough.
I love the way the piece ends. I mean, the woman's life goes on and you planned a funeral together and, and, you know, she's continued to live her life and all the rest, but you end the piece with the death of her husband. Why did you choose to stop it there and not talk about, you know, what she said next or what happened after or?
Well, a, a, actually in part because that was our journey together as the hospital chaplain was, was, that was the journey. But also because in that interaction was, was the rest of the story. Right? The, the seed of the story, the gospel, right? When we talk about that was contained in that moment and it, and it feeds and lives into her future life and the, the way that, you know, she lives and the way that I live. But that was the miracle moment, the miracle of the tiny, perhaps to someone watching insignificant. But to our, our souls that speak this language of eternal hope, right? It was, yeah, a blasting of light that you know, cleared away all the darkness for a moment and, and from which we can live for a very long time. Regardless of what happens next.
You go and stop it right there. That's, that's great. This is so much more powerful than all the funeral home things we say, oh, he's in a better place or, you know, that kind of stuff. The grace was there in the moment.
Yeah, my grace is sufficient unto thee, right? And can we learn how to trust that, that piece of faith and, and unfaith, lacking in faith, which, you know, without judgment, of course we go into those spaces, right? Of course we do. This is, this is hard. And Jesus had a moment where, you know, he wasn't sure that he was held. But, but the more we can share these stories of grace and live into these stories of grace and practice faith, the more we can walk these very difficult paths without needing trite answers. We can live in the complexity of life and know that death is not the end. That there is abundance of, of, of life, love, grace in God's story. And of hope.
So we have seven minutes to unpack that in small groups. Let me remind you again, there's already some personal stories coming up in the chat and that's important. This stuff is close to the bone. But as we go into the small groups, honor the people you're with, take away the learnings and leave behind the specifics. The specifics are there to support the learnings, but it's the learnings we want to take away. We'll bring you back in, in seven minutes here. Well, welcome back, friends. There's never enough time, is there? So what what were the learnings out of that conversation? I know it was short. A sentence, a phrase, a, a, it's just, just a line or two in the, in the chat. What are you taking out of that small group time together?
The importance of listening.
Thank you.
Connection.
Acknowledging silence and the power of it.
Thanks, John. Gail says, being in the valley of the shadow of death.
Your love is to evolve.
Thanks. And Sally says, the amazing sense of peace as you sit with the dying. Powerful presence of God, knowing that we're not alone. Blessings of grace and peace, says Anne, offering hope in our friendships, says Marie. Blessings of grace and peace, says Anne, offering hope in our friendships, says Marie. Present in silence, says Beryl. Holding space, says Nancy. The last said, sometimes it's better to sit in and experience Holy Saturday, says Susan. Thank you for joining me on this six month, six week journey. It's, uh, it's been a delightful time together, I certainly have enjoyed it. After the closing music, I'm going to put up a poll just to collect a little bit of feedback. If, if you've got a reasonably recent version of Zoom, you should be able to use the poll. Otherwise, just put your comments in the chat. I'm kind of looking for feedback on the process and the content and, and the most valuable learning. Now we need to gather ourselves one more time into prayer as we, as we prepare to go separate ways. Let's pray together. Sing that love song into our hearts, oh God. Sing to us as we approach Good Friday and all the Good Fridays in our lives. The times when death is sharp and hope seems lost. Teach us to sing when death has come and we don't see resurrection yet. And yet we live in grief, trusting, hoping, relying on the fact that you are there even in those quiet times. Sing a love song into our hearts. Now teach us to sing with grace and depth and harmony. And then Alexa, great physician, you heal my soul when all feels lost. Share your divine love through me in the moments when I feel hopeless and into the situations that feel hopeless. Teach me to trust in the power of love's touch, love's song, love's ability to bear witness so that broken hearts might mend and all might be renewed by your gracious love. Amen. Well, again, thanks, friends. Good to be with you. So I have put up that poll, I'd love to have your responses. And the last question is, haven't I, may I have permission to share your thoughts with, with others? And I hope we'll have a chance to do this again next year. Bye for now.